We call our regular commissioners meeting to order. Let us all stand for the invocation and for each pledge. And an American pledge to the American flag. Keep my mind on that.
Our fathers, we come to you today. We come sometimes as impatient children. We know we prayed for rain and rain, Lord, and now we pray and we think we have enough. But God, we know that you know what we need. But we do know one thing for sure. We were elected to represent the people of Nash County, and that is what we should be about, and not about anything else but to look after our constituents and those around about us. So you be with us as we go through this meeting, and God may we just remember that you are the one in charge. Amen.
Place your flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. We all got copies of our minutes. The motion to approve the minutes, all of them in one motion?
All for motion for approval of two minutes within the corrections, should that be in.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Outlaw. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same sign. Men's approve unanimous. I got no public comments. No one signed up for public comments, so we'll move on to the next thing on the agenda, which is one of our fellow commissioners, special recognition time, Commissioner Lou I would, let's go down in front.
Before I present this certificate to Commissioner Richardson, I want to say a few things about her. You got some things, make sure that they're in this in the board that she served as a commissioner. I would read them all. She has a distinguished record of public service. She's been here as a county commissioner 20 years plus, who's the first member in 1995. And some of the projects, she's distinguished herself, has a good record on supporting public education, housing programs, senior facilities, parks and recreation, and also our county board system. Now, opening year, she's served on numerous committees and boards, and one they grew up, supposed to play council, government, board of directors. Nash adult care home advisory committee, boys and girls club, Nash unit advisory board, Spargo and Research Center advisory board, It's Gone Mass, JCPC council, and that's Juvenile Prevention Council, the East Point Minimal Health Advisory Board, and Senior Sunday Advisory Board. Now, as chairman of this board, I am proud to present this certificate to longtime county service, to longtime county commissioner. This is a service board for 20 years plus. And I would say congratulations to you, and I hope that you'll be here with us a few more years. All right. Do you have anything more to say? I'm sure you have some that might come up in this conference.
Well, let it go, and then you go later.
Isn't that sweet?
That's great.
Wow.
If someone had told us 20 years ago when our father died that this is where we would be, I would have told them they were absolutely out of their mind. But here we are today to celebrate 20 years of paid service to the citizens of Nash County. So on behalf of Kermit, Herb, and our partner in crime, Mrs. Bailey Sister Moore, we present to you 20 roses, one for each year of paid service.
I'd like to take the opportunity to take Mr. Bayfield, the chairman of this great body, fellow commissioner, on behalf of the Richardson family. And there are a few of them here, and I'd ask for those to stand right now, those of the Richardson family, Nancy Dill. You know, our father worked with this father's body many years ago, and he always taught us to lead by example. And we started out walking behind him many years ago, and he has led us into many different directions. And there were times when we did not always understand what he would tell us to do, but he was always right. And today, we are proud to be here to celebrate with our mother. You all have been very gracious to her. We want to thank you all for all your acts of kindness to her. She's been bossing us for long. Y'all only get to see once or twice, and we can't see them every day. But on behalf of the Richardson family, and my mom in particular, we're very fond of, and my baby girl, I guess you think that my mother is the mom of the job, is that what y'all call it? And so we're very proud of her because she is God-given to us, and we pray that she will continue to be God-given district woman.
You know, I'm one that's trying not to allow a lot of talking. My, my, a lot of years I would talk. Somebody said you went to the church, you have to know Wednesday, and how much to say, and sit back and let other people talk, and you learn, and then go on, and what you're supposed to do. But you know, I was put in this position, I did not plan it. It was not planned. But when God said to you, don't pass the good signs, you really don't have a choice. So I was set in that, in this position by his choice, and by the people, District One and the other, supportive of Nash County, and where I was going. For five terms, I have been set in this position. Not that I really planned to, but when the Lord sits on me, when I try to open a door and do it my way, he closes, and then another one, he says, this is my life. Anyway, I, my main concern, always had been to support caring of our citizens, especially our children and our elders. That's one thing that is what bothers me, and I don't think we're like, you have a problem with this. I thank you all for your support over the years, and most of all, thank God for giving me strength to do this. Thank you.
See you.
Thank you.
Nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next thing on our agenda is a public hearing addressing ordinance changes and call on Scott Rogers.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Congratulations, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you.
We appear before you on August the 3rd and ask for your approval to evaluate and revise the current addressing ordinance of Nash County to assist us in some emergency response issues. Since that time, we formed a committee consisting of the Planning Department, the Tax Department, the County Manager's Office, and Emergency Services to revise the ordinance. What we've done is basically develop the new ordinance that alleviates the response issues that we were experiencing, as well as provide some ease of use for the customers in a couple of instances. The revision has been approved by the county attorney. An information meeting has been held with the, to discuss the proposed changes with the towns that are affected. And now, I'd like to ask Mr. Ty, Adam Tyson, to come and share some of the technical details with you. He's been very instrumental in developing the new policy.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
What I want to talk really briefly about is some of the things that would and would not change with this ordinance amendment. The first thing that would not change would be the county's address and jurisdiction. In general, the county continues to address the unincorporated areas of the county, as well as all of our municipalities, with the exceptions of the town of Nashville and the city of Rocky Mount. And no change in this ordinance amendment would affect that. We also don't propose any changes to the current methodology used to assign street numbers or to the display requirements. The most significant proposed changes are outlined by the bullet points that you'll find in your report and that I'll go over right now. The first change is a replacement of the previous E-911 committee with a designated addressing administrator for more centralized addressing authority and more efficient responses to addressing problems. What we found is that while a committee was useful during the initial adoption of the E-911 system, the determinations that need to be made now at this stage, such as whether individual address numbers are correctly sequenced, or whether you have an odd number on the even side of the road, those are objective things that can better be handled by an individual and don't require the input of an entire committee. The second change is it establishes a new authority for the county to post and maintain official address numbers on unnamed paths or easements where there's some particular concern about potential emergency response issues. These would be cases where you have houses that are far off the road, or not visible off the road, or perhaps groups of houses that are far off the road. This is a new authority that in those cases, the county could post signs very similar to what I have here at the road. This would be something that would probably be exercised pretty rarely because the responsibility to post addresses stays with the property owner, but it does give the addressing administrator the opportunity to call upon the posting of these signs when there's a specific situation that's a particular concern. The next change is that this amendment calls for increased coordination between the county and our municipalities on proposed new road names, and the point of that is to discourage the adoption of names that duplicate or sound too similar to existing roads. Obviously, you would not want to create confusion when calling for an emergency response. Although we do have the addressing authority over nine of those municipalities, they each retain their own authority to name or rename roads, and so closer coordination should prevent those naming conflicts. Another new feature of this amendment would be a new 15-character limit on proposed new road names, with exceptions to be authorized by the Board of Commissioners. The committee found that shorter road names are easier to say and remember in emergency situations. They also help us keep our sign cost lower, as longer signs are more expensive. One thing to point out is this is a limitation that can be overruled by the board whenever it's warranted by a particular situation. So if an instance arose where the board wished to name a road after a particular individual who had more than 15 characters in their name, that is easily accounted for, by that exception, to be approved by the commissioners. The ordinance provides recommendation for standardizing the usage of road type suffixes, and those are the class of road that comes at the end of the name, such as road, street, drive, court, lane. And it basically just provides some guidelines to standardize when we should use each term. It establishes a new preaddressing procedure for certain residential subdivision lots in order to reduce permit wait times for builders and developers. Preaddressing is a customer service improvement that the county has experimented with in the past, and this amendment would formalize it going forward as an official part of our addressing procedures. It also provides a new procedure for address changes and corrections that includes a written notice and a 30-day notification period prior to the actual effective date of the change. You'll remember that one major factor driving this amendment process is the fact that the old ordinance did not touch upon maintenance of addressing or addressing these changes and corrections that need to be made. So this sets out a formal procedure that will follow going forward. And then the final change is a specified civil penalty of up to $50 per day as a potential consequence of a continuing violation of the ordinance's requirements. The current ordinance makes reference to a civil penalty, but the amount was specified on the advice of the county attorney. And so those are the major things that, if adopted, would be changed about our addressing ordinance.
If there are specific questions for Mr. Tyson or myself, we'd be glad to try and answer those. If not, we have properly advertised the public hearing for today in the Rocky Mount Telegram, the Nashville Graphic, and the Springup Enterprise, so we would ask you to authorize that public hearing now.
Any questions first before we do that from any commissioner?
I just got one question. Those signs, some of them are green, some of them are blue. Is there any relevance to the color?
I think the signs that you're referring to are the ones that are out there now.
Yes.
And those are usually supplied by volunteer fire departments as part of fundraising efforts. And so certainly, those fire departments would still be able to continue to sell those.
But my point is, mine's, I got a blue, and some people get a green one. Is there...
I think the only importance is that there's a contrast between the color of the number and the color of the sign.
One doesn't mean something in particular. Okay.
I think the colors are simply vendor-specific, wherever they get the sign material from.
Yes. I have a question. You spoke of the chance of changes maybe in some addresses. Okay, if there were changes in addresses, how would they be implemented up into the, specifically the automotive system, so they can instead have it feed in because of that change?
I think that the DMV relies on a closer relationship with the tax department than they ever have before. And under these regulations, when the addressing administrator makes a change to an address and it becomes effective on that 30th day after that notification period, he will be in contact with our tax department to pass that change along.
Mission Davis?
Couple of questions. Scott, the signs that we just spoke of, is the volunteer fire department the only place? Occasionally, get asked, where can I get those signs? I tell them the volunteer fire department, but some of them do it, some of them do not. So...
That's right.
What's a good answer for that question?
Unfortunately, I'm afraid the answer is some do it and some don't. However, there are some commercial applications as well, you know, any typical sign shop can do it. And there are some agencies that are not related to the fire service that are out and about doing it as a door-to-door sales, too. But the, I guess the best answer may be is we could get you a list of the fire departments that are doing it, and you could provide that to you.
Oh, that would hit.
Okay.
Sure would. The second question, we talk about a violation of ordinance. I'm just thinking, what would be a violation of this ordinance?
I think it would be a case where an address has been assigned or changed, and the property owner refuses to make a corresponding change or refuses to post it at all. And so they could be cited as being in violation with the addressing ordinance. Obviously, you know, our goal is to have the address posted, not to impose any penalties on the property owner, so we would exhaust all notification options before we got to that point. But it would just about have to be a refusal to post an address or to post it in a proper way according to the standards of the ordinance.
And does the ordinance itself now require an individual to post an address, because we still have so many residents that do not have numbers on houses?
Right. If, wherever those instances are encountered on an individual basis, the GIs, I mean, the addressing administrator is empowered through the ordinance to notify them that they need to post the address and to take proper action if they don't follow through.
Do we intend or have someone assigned to follow up on that? Because I'm gonna guess half or more do not have an address.
I think the most likely way we would encounter that is through a difficulty of an emergency responder trying to actually find a particular residence. And if they were to encounter a difficulty, we would certainly want that not to be repeated in the future, so we would take it up with that property owner. In those cases, those property owners more than likely would feel motivated to correct that problem as well, just to make sure that doesn't happen again.
Which is how we correct most problems. Could we possibly do some kind of public relations campaign to try to improve the number of people that have them posted, to be proactive with this possibly? Just a question y'all can think about, sure, you'll need to answer them today.
First thing comes to my mind is back when we originally did this address ordinance, the first time, we developed some posters and talked about the importance of posting your address and whatnot. And we could maybe revisit that campaign and try it again.
And my last question, I certainly appreciate the effort of preaddressing new subdivisions. I still think we are unique in the way we address by requiring someone to go to a lot, put a stake in the middle of the lot, then have someone go out, et cetera. If we would keep working on, apparently, there's some way everybody else does it that doesn't require that field visit, maybe with all the GIs stuff we got available now, if it's something we might could accomplish without that two or three-day delay. And it's gotten better. I know one day, one time, we were only going out one day a week, which could call the first and a whole week's time in getting a permit for something. But if we could continue to work on that and try to get it more like most folks seem to do it, to my knowledge, this is the only place that requires that actual stake in the field, visit to the field, and then give them an address at a later date.
This is a step in that direction. It will eliminate the field work portion for lots that don't have width or frontage to accommodate more than one home anyway. And so this, this does take a step in that direction.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. I know y'all coordinated with several different departments working on this, and I think you did a great job, and I appreciate you being proactive in doing this. The only question I have is the administrator, the address administrator, which department would that fall under?
Currently, addressing is a function of the tax department, and so I foresee it will stay there for the time being. One thing that the ordinance does is it allows the county manager, as he certainly always had the authority, to make changes to that as needed.
Thank you.
Okay. The bottom line of the whole ordinance is what, just to change the process. All right. Now, we're ready for a public hearing. I have a motion to go into public hearing.
So do.
Moved by Commissioner Barnes, seconded by Commissioner Outlaw. Commissioner Davis. You've heard that motion to go into public hearing, all in favor of it, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same sign. Ayes unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, we are in a public hearing on this address ordinance change. You may come up and give your name, address, and speak for or against. Anyone wish to speak? Come up now.
I'm Nancy Nixon, I'm the planning director. But I just wanted to let y'all know, we did get one phone call last week in my office asking about whether the preaddressing could apply to our special purpose lots. They tend to be used for small lots, like if somebody wanted to have like an area light in a cemetery, maybe, that needed something, or a utility substation, those kinds of things. So that was not anticipated when we did the draft, but we did get a call last week, and just wanted to let you know that if the small, substandard size special purpose lots might also be included in the preaddressing. And since I think the ordinance says residential subdivision or residential lots, that it might not technically fit the language that's in there.
But it wouldn't be a problem?
No, these are typically, it would be like if a utility substation that needed a piece of equipment, needed an electrical service, then we could preaddress that in the preaddressing part of the ordinance.
So staff is recommending that change, then?
I don't think it's a bad change. The committee has, did not come to review by the committee, it just came in as a call. Okay. But I don't see, I don't see an issue with it. I think that if we could make a determination, I mean, it's possible that we could have a special purpose lot that was large and could have some piece of equipment or some things located in a variety of different locations or sites on it that might make a difference in the address, then I think we would like to be able to run that one through the regular process. But one that's small and is just gonna house one piece of equipment or one electrical service, that might be a little different.
Okay.
Just to address that comment, the staff has no objection to including special purpose utility lots in the category of lots that would be preaddressed. If, if that's the will of the board, if you would just specify that amendment in any motion that you would make going forward.
Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, for motion to close the public hearing.
For move.
Moved by Commissioner Outlaw and seconded by Commissioner Richardson. You've heard that motion and ready for the question. All in favor of it, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same sign. Ayes unanimous. We are now out of the public hearing. Any further discussion? If not, I call for a motion to approve the changes as presented or amended.
Mr. Chairman, if we might ask that you include an effective date in that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
They want an effective date. They want an effective date in the motion.
It's just December 1.
December 1?
Motion, yes.
Okay.
It's been moved that this address ordinance change would be, it's in the motion, it'd be effective December 1, and that we approve the recommendations, all in favor...
I guess that includes the changes made this morning, Ms. Wells.
The amendment that Ms. Nixon recommended...
The amendment we just discussed relating to special purpose lots.
Special purpose lot. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor of that motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same sign. Ayes unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
On our agenda calls for a break. Are we ready for a break now, or should we move on?
You want a break? You want a break now? Either way. Yeah, we'll do it right now if you want to. That's our tea. Oh, everybody's...
Let's move on.
All right. All right, let's just, let's take a five-minute break. Call the meeting back to order. Next thing on the agenda is application authorization for the sheriff's department and Major Dennis Wooten.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Congratulations, Ms. Richardson, thank you for the service to the county. I'm here this morning to present a grant to you that the sheriff has asked me to apply for. This grant is the sheriff's vision of starting a drug and gang task force...
Are we ready for a break now, or should we move on?
You want a break? You want a break now?
Either way. Yeah, we'll do it right now if you want to. That's our tea. Oh, everybody's.
Let's move on.
All right. All right, let's just take a five minute break. Called meeting back to order. Next thing on the agenda is application authorization for the Sheriff's Department and Major Dennis Wooton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Congratulations, Ms. Richardson. Thank you for the service to the county. I'm here this morning to present a grant to you that the sheriff has asked me to apply for. This grant is the sheriff's vision of starting a drug and gang task force in the three counties that comprise the 7th Judicial District, Nash, Wilson, and Edgecombe. Our grant will, the grant that I'm applying for right now will begin February and run through June. It's for the salary of a retiring DEA agent that we've identified to lead this grant and to lead this task force, as we're going to be the leading agency on the task force. It's for his salary. Will be asked for no fringe benefits for him. He'll be getting retirement from the federal government, so he won't need any fringe benefits for him. Just for salary, a couple pieces of equipment, firearms, and uniforms to run from February until June. Our goal of this task force is to reduce our crime rate here based on the belief that drugs and gangs are driving force behind crime in our area. We're hoping that by using several different law enforcement agencies, Tarboro, Wilson P D, Nashville P D, probation parole, the S B I L E, DEA, Homeland Security, working jointly, we'll be able to do that. We'll be able to spread our resources across three counties. We'll be able to assist each other. Our information sharing will be very timely. We'll be working with each other daily. We won't have to make phone calls. We won't have to go to, over to Wilson to get reports. We won't have to go to Edgecombe and get reports. It'll be timely. So our information sharing is very important to us, and we think that that's going to help us, especially here in Nash County where we have several, identified several detectives now that are working drugs, you know, having, you know, 18, 19, or 20 people at one time working together to make these cases and investigate these cases. That's the grant briefly. Do you have any questions for me regarding the grant?
When this grant run out, you're looking at maybe applying for?
Yes, sir. This grant that we have right now will run from February until June. As soon as this grant's approved and we can apply for it, we'll be applying for a second grant, which, you know, hopefully this week. And we'll start the process of applying for a second grant. That grant will begin July of next year and run for two years, and will cover the same aspects as this grant does as far as salary, just salary over that two-year period.
Okay. Mr. Chairman. Questions from other commissioners?
Dennis, I find your partners a little bit strange to me, more particularly ones that are not included, being County of Wilson, County of Edgecombe, apparently City of Rocky Mountain. Can you tell us where the mix came from?
We are still, we are still in negotiations with Wilson and Edgecombe County sheriffs, presenting to them and making sure, getting them on board. The Rocky Mountain Police Chief has declined to take acceptance to the task force.
You leave me wondering why, but maybe you're not prepared to answer that. You probably tell them to ask him, I guess.
It's my understanding he believes that his crime rate's not driven by the drug and gang problem.
Okay. All right. And to follow up on Mr. Bellfield's question, with the second grant, if we're not successful, what do we do?
We will have to abolish the position.
Abolish the position. You didn't mention a vehicle. Are we furnishing this individual vehicle, I guess?
We're going to make arrangements within our fleet now to get a vehicle to him. Driving an older car most likely until we can get something for him.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, just a comment. You say you would abolish the position, but if you were seeing positive results from the position, then?
Then we may, we may at some point come and ask. But we're pretty confident we can move forward with that two-year grant.
Yeah, I would hate to see you say you abolish something that's showing some positive results.
Yes, sir.
And I'm a little bit disappointed that we don't have more partners involved in this, like Mr. Davis referenced.
As well as the sheriff is.
I mean, we're always talking regionalization, and here's an opportunity to really do something that could impact a broader region, Bay County region.
You're exactly right.
Yeah. But you're still working with Edgecombe and Wilson County.
We are. We're still working to get, hopefully they can get the resources to us where they can take part.
I hope you're successful in bringing that to fruition.
I would, I wouldn't give up getting all of them in there, including Rocky Mountain. I would make a second approach.
I understand.
And you might want to make it a little different from maybe, I don't know how you, how Nash County Sheriff's Department approached Rocky Mountain. I have no idea. But there are different ways of getting people involved because the impact, I agree with Commissioner Outlaw, we need to look at this thing in a broad perspective. Drugs and gang, that's a problem. That's where a lot of this violence come from.
And in my opinion, it's where most of it come from.
Yeah.
I think most everybody would agree with that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Dennis, I would think that if the program is successful, at some point, it would self-support itself and find a forfeiture, forfeitures, would it not?
That's what we're hoping to do.
Then you could just continue on and on.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And I'll just say, sometime it takes a second approach.
Yes, sir. I will make sure the sheriff is noted of that.
Yeah. Yeah, make sure you tell him that.
I will.
I've seen it happen, and second approach, things change.
Yes, sir.
Maybe he's learning some new techniques in his current schooling.
Maybe so.
No other questions?
Mr. Chairman, we would ask the board to consider a motion to approve us applying for this grant and authorize me to sign the necessary papers.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the request.
So. Moved by Commissioner Outlaw, seconded by Commissioner Morgan, that we approve this request. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same sign. Ayes unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
Next on the agenda, budget amendments.
Surplus property resolution.
A minute. Maybe I turned too, I'm sorry. I flipped over too quick.
Okay.
Surplus properties.
Okay. I have, I'm going to have a resolution on behalf of the Sheriff's Department, authorizing the donation of county-owned surplus property to a nonprofit organization, and I'm requesting the board's approval for the resolution. I'll just read the description. The Sheriff's Office has identified law enforcement winter duty codes that have become surplus from its current needs and is aware of a local nonprofit organization with a need for the winter coats. In order to make this donation, General Statute 168, 280, donations of personal property to other government units provides that the governing board must adopt a resolution declaring that the property to be donated is surplus and give formal approval for the donation.
Any questions? To clarify, the statute is titled to other government units, but it also includes nonprofits, and that's why we're using the statute.
Any discussion?
No discussion, but I think that's a good venture to do that, to find some good use and good service for those surplus items. I think that's a good gesture on all our parts.
Any other question? I call for a motion to approve the request.
Move for approval.
Moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Davis. You've heard that motion. All in favor of it, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same sign. Ayes unanimous. Thank you, and you can remain, and we are, next thing on the agenda is budget amendments.
Okay. The following budget amendments are being presented for the board's consideration for fiscal year 1516. First one's for emergency medical services. This amendment appropriates the proceeds from SunTrust Equipment Financing and Leasing Corporation for the financing of the 25 Philips defibrillators. The SunTrust lease proceeds were $6,8,658. The next item is for the Sheriff's Office. This amendment's to book insurance proceeds received for wrecked vehicles. There's no county funds required. This is $8,533. The next item is also for the Sheriff's Department. It's a reappropriation for the Justice Assistance Grant for unspent funds from 2015 of $1,676. No county funds required. Next item is for the Health Department. This amendment's to budget additional state money to support conversion of a universal healthcare billing from I C D 9 to I C D 10 and purchase of the S T D education and prevention materials not supported through other funding. No county funds required. That's $2,000. Next item is for the Aging Department. This budget amendment appropriates collected energy rebates for the sponsorship of the Employee Energy Safety Awareness Week, $4,000. No county funds required. And the next item is for the Department of Social Services. This amendment is to update appropriations and related expenditures based on funding approved in the final state budget for $82,281. No county funds are required. And the final item is with the Register of Deeds. This budget amendment appropriates fund balance for the COT System Incorporated Contract for the backup imaging system. That's $2,800. That was not appropriated as part of the original budget.
Any questions from board members?
This last one, is that coming from that automation fund balance? Is that?
No, this is actually, last year, in the, last year, we didn't have to pay for it, but in the past, we have had to pay the servicing for it. But it's, it's not coming from her, her fund balance. It's just part of.
Is it eligible to come?
She's, she's checking into it, but in the past, it has not been paid out of her fund.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Call for a motion to approve the budget amendments.
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Davis.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. You've heard that motion. All in favor of it, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same sign. Ayes unanimous. Next thing on the agenda is the food and nutrition service update. Call on Donna Boone.
Morning.
Morning.
Unfortunately, North Carolina has experienced some challenges in meeting the USDA mandates regarding processing food nutrition applications timely. And their expectation is that 95% of the applications should be processed according to their mandates. In fiscal year 2013, North Carolina processed their applications timely at the rate of 75%. And we ranked 49th in the, in 53 state departments. So the USDA has, we haven't made significant progress. So the USDA has issued a warning letter to the state of North Carolina that we needed to make significant progress and with the goal of being 85% current between July of 2015 and December of 2015 and effective January, be 95% current. Part of the problem is that North Carolina's interpretation of timely is different than what the USDA's interpretation was. For example, for emergency benefits, USDA says the benefit needs to be in the hands of the client in seven days, and those are people who have less than $150 income per month. And for regular standard cases, they need to be processed and the benefit in the hands of the client in 30 days. Well, North Carolina's policy said the case had to be processed for emergency cases in seven days and for standard cases in 30 days. Well, that meant the benefit wasn't actually received by the client for four to five days afterwards by the time they get their card and get it penned. So North Carolina has changed its policy, its processing policy, so that in emergency cases, all emergency applications have to be processed within four days, so the benefit will be received by the client in seven days. And for standard cases, they have to be processed by 25 days so that the client will have their benefit in 30 days. So that's been a major change for all the departments and all the counties to try to achieve that goal. We just started receiving our, our position three weeks ago, so even though the policy, the challenge was issued in July, just three weeks ago, we found out where we were, where we ranked. And in the last three weeks, mind you, the state has to be at 85% right now. And the state is at 86.6%, and Nash County is at 91.71%. So we are exceeding the expectation by the USDA. Our goal is 100%. That is what we're striving for. That's what we're working for. But unfortunately, some of the challenges that we have experienced have been with the system. The USDA and their warning letter even acknowledged that North Carolina was doing well until we implemented N C fast, and that has been a challenge. For example, we had two emergency cases last week. We get a report every morning to show you what's due, and we had two emergency cases that were showing up as 30-day cases and did not even show that they were late until they were already late. And so that is, whenever we get situations like that, I'm contacting my counterpart in the state saying, the system is causing us to not be able to achieve the goal that we're setting. So just know that we are working very hard to meet those goals. The USDA's wording is they could suspend funds to the state if we don't meet the expectations. They did not say that they will, but they said that they could suspend funds. And right now, the USDA's allocation to the state of North Carolina is $75 million, and that trickles down to Nash County to $852,000. And we are part of the state, so whatever, however the state meets that goal, Nash County will follow along in with that. But we're working very, very hard to make sure that Nash County is doing our part. We've made some adjustments to try to make sure that we can stay on top of this. The reports are reviewed every morning by the supervisor and the lead worker to see exactly what is due for that day, and they are on it to make sure that those cases are processed, to make sure that we're meeting that timeframe. We've reassigned the electronic applications, the walk-ins and mail-ins to one worker so that we can streamline it and stay on top of all of those to make sure that they're assessed for emergency needs. And unfortunately, our staff are working late and on Saturdays to try to make sure that we're in compliance. That has become necessary. And we're assessing our staffing patterns within the department to see if we need to make some readjustments to add more help to food nutrition. An example of the numbers that we're looking at, we have 9,171 food nutrition cases in Nash County, and the individuals in those cases are 18,385. And for, these are October numbers, and the benefits issued for October exceeded $2 million. So we have a huge task on our hands. Our staff are working very hard to try to meet that goal, and we're trying to work the system to make sure that we can get the system to work with us, and if we find an issue with that, we're addressing that with the state. Questions?
You're talking about the old food stamp program. North Carolina's system that they've set up seemed to be awful slow. We had the problem back, well, last year, trying to get things caught up. Do you know if they're looking at possible changes to speed things up?
They are looking at changes. A lot of money has been spent on this system, has been invested for this system in North Carolina. And so they're, they are looking at changes. As a matter of fact, there's a change supposed to occur in the month of November that's supposed to help, help us out. Our staff tell us that it takes a lot longer to process a case now than it used to. But it's a system that we have. It's a system that, that the legislators have decided that North Carolina will use. And we've struggled with it in conversion into food nutrition. We struggle with it conversion into Medicaid. And the next programs that'll be coming on will be childcare and the energy systems, and we're not looking forward to that, but it's what we have. And so we're making, we're working with it the best we can, and if we find an issue with it, we're addressing that with the state. But it is, it is what we have to work with, and.
It seems like all the counties, some of the counties are not in a critical condition. Well, maybe that's not the word, critical condition, but are not in, maybe in an emergency situation where they're just. in maybe an emergency situation where they are just completely falling behind. But those that are not going to be punished with the system, because they're looking at North Carolina as a whole. So the state, seemed like to me, needs to refine their system so that they can, it can be more efficient in getting things done, not taking so many days. So you said they want it done in seven days, and it seemed like to me, with a computer system, it ought to be, be able to do it in seven days and not taking more than that, 14 or whatever, two weeks or more.
It's a challenge. We are, we are required to verify certain information. And we depend on the client to get us the information back that we need. We verify what we can in the systems that we have, but we do depend on them to work, to provide us the information so that we can take action on their case.
Doesn't a lot of that verification prevent redundancy and things of that nature in the distribution of benefits?
We're hoping that that's gonna-
All this is tied to the NCFAST program?
Right. We're hoping it's going to be connected and make things better down the road, but right now we're-
Well, I can tell you from what I, little bit I know about it, it's much better this year than it was last year. And it's like any new program, it just takes some time to get acclimated to it and familiar with it. I think you guys do a great job, wonderful job.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I do.
Chairman.
Couple of questions. Ms. Boone, you mentioned when you first started, 49 out of 53. Would you repeat that? Because I didn't catch what you said there.
North Carolina ranked 49th out of 53 departments in the nation that process food nutrition.
Does that mean it's four worse than we are or four better than we are?
There are four worse than we are.
Well, I thought it meant.
And that's new for North Carolina. That's generally not where we have, have been.
But it's worse simply based on the way they were defining the seven and the 30 days.
We're hoping that that's part of it. We have-
What it sounded like.
We have, North Carolina is better. We've gone from 70, 75% to 86%, but there are still some other challenges.
You don't know what that ranking today would be, do you?
The ranking, the information I gave you was, is what I received Friday, and that's always a week behind. We, and so I-
I was hoping that was last year's.
No, the 86% is of Friday.
No, I meant the 49 versus 53.
I don't think that's changed a lot. The last webinar that I was on, we were still sitting at 49, and that was about two months ago.
And I think the chairman answered the question for me, to make sure if an entity were to lose funding, i- is that a whole state that's going to lose it based on the state?
It's based on the state.
Based on the state.
So we could be 95%, then one county somewhere be way down, and we could lose funding based on that.
And, and we're, we're a small, we're small in this big, yeah, we're, we're one piece of the, the 100 counties.
But the state provides resources, people, resources that go into these areas that are in need and provides them with that assistance.
I'm hoping that they are. Every county had to-
They have up to this point, I believe.
Every county had to submit a plan, a, a program, an improvement plan. And we just did submit ours, and ours was approved by the state. So we're, we're in line with where we can be at this point.
Is it over, over to need? Is the need that should be put first rather than second or third or whatever when, when we got, when we get to it? But it's most time it's a, one that's most needed that maybe that's done, had most work done to it to make it get out of the, there's a lot of people in one where you don't get, and you gotta have, gotta have a reason for all that, but anyway, they gonna, they gonna get that. They, because they'll, Nash County don't know, they always get top dollars, so they gonna get it.
Any other questions? If not, is it-
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Boone for her work in this matter. This is not our first time at this rodeo. As she mentioned, we dealt with a similar problem last year with NCFAST Medicaid. And there was a webinar about a month, month or two ago where a lot of information was provided to us, and a lot of people on the staff attended it. We get weekly reports from Ms. Boone, and I can tell you, when you look at all the counties across the state, as y'all have pointed out, we could be at 98% and the average be 93%, and the whole state would lose that money. The 852 that comes to Nash County, correct me if I'm wrong, but that is administrative money-
That's correct.
-for positions.
For positions.
That are about 50%.
50%.
So that money's providing funds to, to staff the food nutrition program. And if we lost that, we would have to either reduce staff or more likely, we would have to put some money in the budget. So we are about 1% of the total in the county, I mean, in the state. And when you look at the numbers, you can see there are, there's a problem with the larger counties being timely, and they're weighted more than we are, obviously. And, but I, I just want to say that Ms. Boone and her staff are on top of it. They're getting our numbers up, and I appreciate the constant information we're getting from her.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'm sure the entire board appreciate what you all are doing. As I was saying earlier, I, I don't see us, in, in what I know, I don't see us in, in that predicament like some of these counties that's causing the state. Be on the verge of maybe losing some funds. But we all, all counties are going to be punished if, if it happens, if that, if we don't get the system up to the point where we can satisfy USDA.
USDA is, is working very closely with North Carolina, and I think they're pleased with the effort that's being made. And their, their warning letter said could lose, didn't say will lose or shall. So we're, we're hoping that they will recognize the improvement in, in the rate in North Carolina and, and work with us. But we're, we're working to try to achieve that goal.
Okay. Bottom line, we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Good job. Uh, any other comments? If not, thank you. Next is board appointments. Rosemary?
Good morning.
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 Today, we just have a few carryovers from last month. The Tourism Development Authority, we still have one vacancy to replace Mr. David Joyner, who resigned. And his, that term will expire on April 30th, 2016. So I'll ask if there are any-
I have a name I'm going to bring in December, but I do not have my paperwork from the individual quite yet. And it, as we said, it has to be a collector.
Correct. And then we also have two positions on the Consolidated Human Services Board. One, the psychiatrist member, and the other is the psychologist member. You do have, from Commissioner Outlaw, a recommendation of Dr. Robert Tony Coats to fill the position. His application was included in your agenda. He lives on East NC 97 and is currently working at Walter B. Jones Alcohol and Drug Addiction Treatment Center in Greenville.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the appointment of Doc Coats to the, as a psychologist member to the Consolidated Health Board.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Davis. You've heard that motion? Any discussion?
Just clarification. That's a two-year term through April of 17, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of that motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposes the same sign, ayes unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, looking ahead to December, as we always do in December, have a, a lot of appointments to make, just to give us a little notice to start looking at those. And of course, some of them are on our hospital board, and I know we've asked many times to get a cooperative effort on those, but yet I see we've been sent three names up without any dialogue to date. And I just hope that somehow we'll work together on those as we move forward, getting those three positions filled. I thought maybe there would be some dialogue between the hospital board and the commissioners prior to getting names submitted, but that's not what, what we've actually gotten. We've got the three names submitted again. So if we would work hard to look at those and make sure they're the right people, make sure we diversify those members throughout the county, which may be a, a challenge with what I see thus far. But with that said, I'm just going to study it some more.
Lot come from the county, from the hospital relative to the county, no?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, between now and the first, I'll make contact with them.
Right. That'd be great.
And about, and maybe we can have a discussion before our first meeting. I mean, our monthly meeting in December, regular meeting in December.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, now we're ready for the monthly tax report.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Manager and others, this is, of course, as routine, is for informational purposes only, but be glad to try to answer any questions you might have about the report. Just one general observation is fortunately, at this time, we seem to be trending a little ahead of last year even now, which last year was a very good year for us, so very pleased to be able to report that. Hope we can keep that up. The staff is really working hard to try to do so. The only, the area that probably you'll see the most difficulty in is prior years, and as we do a better job of that each year, that what's left, that portion that's left becomes more and more difficult to get. But we continue to use means to try to continue to get that down as well.
Follow up on that. If you look at the prior year, page two, you'll see that the actual receivables are down over 300,000. There's, there's less out there to bring in, which is a good thing. That's why the percentage might be a little down, but they're still doing a great job.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? All right. Tax refund.
All right. And we do have some tax refunds that you have in your information. And again, if there are any questions relative to that, otherwise we submit them for your approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, that we approved the tax refunds. You've heard that motion? All in favor of it, let it be known by saying aye. And opposes the same sign, ayes unanimous. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, any reports from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of reports. I attended the Ag Steering Committee meeting in Raleigh a couple of weeks ago. Dan Gerlach make a, made a presentation from Golden Leaf. Also, there was a presentation made from the NC Farm School, which has been a very successful program in the Piedmont area, and they indicated to me that we would be having that in Nash. Is that correct? This, this year. And it's a seven-month program where people interested in farming can sign up and pay, I think it's 200, $300 to, to go through the, the school. And they learn about everything they need to know about starting a business, starting the, a farming operation type business. So it's been very successful, and I'm excited that it's coming here to Nash County. They were looking for some funding also because I think the Golden Leaf grant they didn't get this time. So I want to let you know about that. And also, the Industrial Hemp Association made a presentation. So that bill became effective until all Friday night. And they did a great, a presentation to the Ag Steering Committee, letting people know the whole process. They're establishing a commission. They have to raise $200,000 in order to establish that commission and start a pilot program so that farmers who are interested can begin growing industrial hemp.
Okay.
Also, if anybody else, I can wait till the end to talk about the East Point.
I was just going to ask you a question. Maybe you are Charlie Tyson, might answer. Does this replace the Young Farmers Institute that they have at NC State? It's a different program, right?
It's, it's with the cooperative extension, but in conjunction, they partner with NC State as well.
Okay. Okay. Any other reports from commissioners?
I just, if you, if you looked at the telegram this morning, one of our finest in EMS was recognized. And I think maybe Scott, could you take just a minute to just kind of update the group on what Director Brantley was recognized with? That's fine.
We, Frank Fisher and myself, took upon ourselves to, to submit Mr. Brantley's application for the Nick Ward's Award for the North Carolina Emergency Management Association this year. This award is given to the, to a local coordinator from one of the jurisdictions in North Carolina. It's named after a, a past coordinator from Orange County, Mr. Nick Ward's. And we solicited support from, from anybody that works with our organization throughout the state. And Brian was forcing us to be given that award two weeks ago at the Emergency Management State Conference in Sunset, Indiana.
And it was a great picture.
My wife, one thing's off with that picture, because the reason why you're going there. But I would like to say, as I said in the newspaper, the reason I received the award is the employee we've had over many, many years, and also the support from my bosses, the county managers that I work for, and the county commissioners who've always supported the emergency services program. And Dave and I came here in 1985. We didn't have NAMM 1, we didn't have National EMS, we didn't have a fire protection program, we didn't have a very good emergency management program, and with all the good employees and the support from all the boards we've worked with, I think we're, as I told y'all last week, we're second to none in the state of North Carolina, and it's because y'all's support and all the good employees we've had all these years. So I thank y'all for y'all's support to help me get my picture as I'm saying.
Mr. Bill Phil, I'm going to mention the meeting that you and I got called to last week from Dominion. One day last week, Chairman and I met with Dominion Power. We both went into the meeting, I think. I, I know I did, in the comment he made, thought we were going to be talking about the gas main, when indeed, they were meeting with us about a new substation in the Battleboro area. It happened to be in my district, and of course, Chairman was there because of his role as chairman. But there will be a public hearing this Thursday night at the Battleboro Fire Department for citizens to come and speak on that. So if you hear something going on, that's what it is, and don't think it's the gas main, it is the electoral substation. If it moves forward, which it sounds like it will, it'll be somewhere between a $9 and $10 million investment in Nash County that will go on to tax rolls as all power producers and that type things do. But I just thought I'd mention that so y'all wouldn't get confused like we did.
Yep. I sure thought that's what we were, when they called about the meeting. I thought that's what it was. And we got this on a new substation and a big investment for Nash County.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any, any other commissioner have been thinking, put before us? Now, call on the county manager.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to update the board on the East Point meeting that I attended last week. I attended the Finance Committee meeting. I'm not on that Finance Committee, but I was told that any board member could attend the meeting, so I, I went to that meeting prior to our East- meeting prior to our East Point Board meeting, asked for some additional information on some expenditures that were charged to local funding. And I have not gotten a response from that yet, but I will let you know when I do. But I can tell you that when I emailed the CEO about some other information, he indicated that he would review my request and respond in due course. And if I had any additional requests from staff that I should make it in writing or call him, ask him directly, because I had made a phone call to the Finance Director about some information, left her a voicemail. And so apparently, I asked, I called the Finance Director so that I could get her email address to email her the request. And the CEO let me know that I should direct everything through him. Our requests should go through him and I shouldn't be calling the staff. So I did email the CEO about some additional information, some lobbyist expenses that I thought were out of line. And that came out of local funding. And I was told that was an error, that amount, and that it was for Strategic Partners, which is a PR firm. Part of the expense was for lobbyists and part of it was for Strategic Partners. But that line item did come out of local funding, which if you will recall, the CEO told us, has told us numerous times that all Nash County dollars stay in Nash County. But upon pressing him, he told me that those expenses came out of local funding. So then I had asked for additional information. And I responded to his email saying that due course was not a satisfactory response, it was unacceptable and vague, and that I would ask my board for direction, for the appropriate action to take if my request is ignored. So I'm putting that out there for you.
Are we getting as much as we're receiving?
That is a good question, Mr. Morgan.
Yeah. Well, I had requested that they prove to me that all the funding that Nash County was putting in there came back to Nash County. And they, they have not done that. Basically, about half of it is what, what I've seen.
So I made this request on Thursday and I asked for response by tomorrow. I think that should be well enough time to get this information that should be readily available. So, I mean, I think that's plenty of time. I don't know what y'all think. But due course didn't seem to me to, that will be tomorrow.
Sounds like we should be getting at least as much as we're giving, and we're not doing it.
Well, well, it's, it seemed to me with the questions and things that have been in news media, that they would be working hard to get their house in order. And I'm not sure if they're trying to do that. Doing it might be slow and, and still more questions being asked.
So some of the information that I requested was for the contracts for the lobbyists for 2000, for 2014 and 15. I asked for copies of the invoices for the legal services. We have two board attorneys, so I asked for those for, from 2013 up to the current year. I asked for all expenses for professional services because professional services is the line item in the budget. And it doesn't say what those professional services are. So, but I, I specifically asked for professional services, including but not limited to attorney fees, public relations consultants, auditor fees, anything, the total expense package that was related to the misconduct of the former CFO, everything that, that East Point paid during, for that whole scandal. And then the last thing I asked for was the salary and benefits for the CEO, the date and results of his last performance review. So I didn't, I didn't think that was anything that would be, that would take a whole lot of time to compile.
It should be available.
It should be ready available, I think.
Well, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm listening. From me, just continue to pursue the information that you have requested.
I was just going to ask the question of either the manager or Vince, is what Ms. Barnes indicated she asked is all of that public information we think that any member of the public could ask for?
Sounds like it.
And Ms. Barnes, you asked in some specific direction from this board about what to do on Wednesday morning if you don't have this information.
Yes.
And certainly, I appreciate what you're doing on this board because all of us can't keep up with everything. And we kind of split up duties. But what is it that you are asking for? Or the manager, help us understand what is it this board needs to do today?
I, I.
I'll certainly support anything you're asking for if you give us some specifics.
I, I just think the information is readily available and should be made available to a board member who has fiduciary liability as a board member. And that kind of information should be given to her. So hopefully, it'll be there. She'll have it in the next day or two. Other information that I'll just mention that came to light at that meeting, according to Ms. Barnes, Commissioner Barnes, is I think we talked earlier that their fund balance as of the end of June 2014 was about $57 million. And preliminary indications are they added $33 million to their fund balance. Over 10% of the population of East Point is Nash County. So just using rough numbers, that's over 3 million of that fund balance increase is attributable to, to Nash County and the contracts for our special needs people. So now they have a $90 million fund balance. And I'll just remind y'all that when y'all ask for some, a committee to be appointed to look at local funding and equity issues between different counties within East Point, and y'all chose to, since there had been no response after several months, y'all chose to cut the budget from 354,000 or 356,000 and a half. So an agency that added $33 million to their fund balance last year, cut services in this county as a result of, of the cut that, that y'all voted to do several months ago. Clearly, for the Medicaid dollars that come to this county, approximately 25 million a year that they get attributable to our population. And they get 7% administrative costs for those Medicaid dollars, which is over about, I'd say about $2 million. They are using that administrative cost in other counties to fund local programs. Yet they saw the need to cut our budget and our programs here in this county and refused to use any of that administrative money. And I think they could have. So.
Cut services.
They, they cut services. They, they, every, every contract vendor was told their contract was being cut in half. And I, I believe a better approach would have been to sit down with us, try to resolve the issue of funding equity that we had asked them month after month to, to look at, rather than the following day to send letters to all the vendors saying, we're cutting your funding in half, given the amount of money that that agency added to their fund balance and the amount of that money that is directly attributable to Nash County.
It sounds as if we're getting a shaft tremendously. But not, it should be, it should be looked into. We should get a fair share. I don't care whose it is, but we should get our fair share of it.
Well, it's all public money.
We're, we're working on it.
It's public money and it should be used for our citizens.
I very much agree.
Yeah. Okay, I'm still wondering.
What, what do we want? What, what result?
And before you answer the question, I, I think we all need to be cognizant of the fact that, that we have taken action to remove ourselves from the problem. It's out of our hands. We all know that. We know it's going to take longer than what we want. And, and the last thing I've read over the weekend seems like it, it might not be quite as severe as it, my first thought was. And it's probably coming, but it's just going to take a little bit of time for us to relocate to another one. But with all of that said, you, you know, I'll use Ms. Richardson's terms if I may, the important part is, is to get the services to the ones that need it.
I mean.
And I want us to be careful about what, for lack of a better word, the yin yang and we seem to be doing a little bit with East Point. Certainly, the information you requested, we need to see it. There's no doubt about that because that helps our cause. But I don't want to lose sight of the goal line by picking things apart and getting too specific. So, but with that said, I'm going to be quiet and you tell us exactly. Somebody tell us what action you want this board to take for you to get you beyond Wednesday if you don't get the information.
You want to speak?
And I'm sorry, I'm not making much sense, but I hadn't thought this through this morning.
I, I think Commissioner Barnes is bringing this information to you for informational purposes. We, she requested this information. She, she doesn't think it should take very long. And so we're hoping that we'll have it tomorrow. If not, you know, there are ways to enforce public records requests.
That's fine. I, I got out of something you said, Ms. Barnes, that you wanted some action this morning, but maybe I misunderstood that.
Well, I thought she meant support.
Well.
To pursue, continue pursuing what she's asked, request. And that's why I say what I say.
And I'll certainly do that.
I think Ms. Barnes should continue doing what she's doing, keep peeling it back.
Right.
And I think we as a full board should continue to move ahead with our alignment with Cardinal.
I'm certainly not trying to pick anything apart, but I do have a, many concerns regarding the oversight of the East Point Board. That was something that was cited by the State Auditor's Office report. There was inadequate oversight by the board and the CEO that led to some of the failures and the misconduct that was, happened in the past. And, you know.
Keep in mind, we had a board member resign for that very cause.
Exactly. And so, and I'm just very concerned about that, specifically my fiduciary responsibility and liability as a board member.
My words were not formulated well. I don't condemn anything that you're doing. I support it 100%. But in, in turn, I want us to be careful that we don't do anything. We've already cut some services in half. We got to go up the stream with caution so we don't hurt the people.
Absolutely.
That, that need the services daily in, in Nash County. But I'm, I'm 100% Mr. Chairman and, and Ms. Barnes, keep looking into it, keep digging into it. And this board supporting it any way we can.
Maybe we need a larger shoe.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that's consensus of the board that she pursued the request that she has put in. And hopefully, we get that information. And at this point, I will listen to, let the board listen to our county manager's report.
And, and let me clarify one thing. On that 33 million, we've been told, at one time, we were told that administrative costs couldn't be used for local programs. And that's current year administrative cost. Prior year administrative costs, once it becomes part of the fund balance, we, we are told can be used for local services. So it just, I just wanted to show y'all the magnitude, the, the amount of money.
Right.
And they get paid per eligible Medicaid recipient per month. And that drawdown based on services is what, when there's less drawdown, then they're paid, they get to keep that fund balance. So that's where their fund balance comes from. And again, we just feel like there's adequate, other counties have, have cut their funding. And I think four counties now have, have reduced funding. And we, we just.
Well, it seems like to me, that building up a fund balance mean that they're not serving as many people. And that ought to be a consideration from the state to not appropriate that money.
That's exactly what happened this year. The General Assembly cut 110 million from all the LMEs for this fiscal year, 152 million next fiscal year. Now, that's the state aid for indigents, not the Medicaid dollars.
Solely because of the fund balances.
And, and it was attributable to the high fund balances. And now, as we have Medicaid reform, they, they have an argument that they need these fund balances or they need a fund balance. The, what the General Assembly said is, we can reduce the amount we're giving you because your fund balances are increasing so much. But, but fund balances are legitimate as we go into Medicaid reform. So, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll see what happens. But yeah, the General Assembly has already addressed the issue of, of those large fund balances and have cut state aid to LMEs for indigent care.
Are we going, in your report, are you addressing this letter? Because I know the chairman needs to respond to it.
We, we.
It's laid out at our table this morning.
Yeah, we, we just got it over the weekend. I think there's several matters in closed session.
Okay.
And we can certainly incorporate that.
Okay. We'll really listen to your, your report.
Okay. I don't have a whole lot. But just reminder about the joint meeting next Monday at 6 o'clock with the Nash Rocky Mount School System. It's our twice-a-year meeting. That's part of our three-year agreement. It's going to be held at Red Oak Middle School. We're going to get a report from the, from Evergreen on the performance audit. And that will be sent to the school system today in advance. So they'll have it for a week. Also, we had an Energy Expo up here, as, as some of y'all might be aware. And this weekend, we had the Monster Dash for the United Way. It was a huge success. Had 221 runners. I think that's more than we had last year or the year before. And so everybody that helped with that, just want to thank you. And, and that's all I have.
Yep. Quick question on our November night. I know we're 6 o'clock at Red Oak Middle. 3 o'clock are we?
We're going to recess this meeting after closed session to 3 o'clock.
Yeah, 3.
On, on the night for a work session on the personnel policy, the.
Vision.
Visioning and the gun in county building ordinance. Yeah.
We'll be in this.
Yeah, we'll be here. That's what I'm recommending.
We're going to be here at 3, rather than at the middle school?
No, at, at 3, we'll meet here.
Okay, all right. I was thinking we would do it all over there. But we can be here.
Well, they, they got school till about 3, 3:30. So we just.
Okay. Okay. Now, your motion to go into closed session for attorney-client privileges for attorney-client privileges and economic development matters, personnel matters.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barnes.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Outlaw. You've heard that motion, all in favor of it, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose the same sign, we are now ready to go into closed session.